We're still waiting on a couple of board members, but we still have two minutes. And now we don't have to worry about quorum. That's good.
All right. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, excellent.
Andrew, what are those some? What are those? What's that art behind your head there? What is that?
So those are art prints by William Schaaf. He does all the album artwork for the band Ockerville River. And he did some illuminated lyrics of a couple of the Ockerville River songs. So you gotta be super fan geek in order to get those.
And you are?
Yes, they're for him. And actually, the top one, he, you could do this request for him to do handwrite any of the lyrics. So I chose plus ones as the song and it says plus ones for Andrew Chance. It just touches my heart.
Wow.
Wrote my name.
Well, I was, I noticed it because it looked like there was a banjo in there. Did Andrew, did you know that I played the banjo?
I did not.
Wow. What's, what's the old line about the mark of a gentleman is he can play the banjo but doesn't? Or knows how to play the banjo, but.
I love the banjo. Are you right? In fact, if I ever get married again, Jim, you'll be my wedding entertainment.
I actually, my wife once booked me in to, to do a wedding reception.
Really cool.
And I, I only know like about eight songs. And in 20 minutes, you know, I was, I'd finished my repertoire. So I just played the same eight songs five more times.
Perfect.
Yeah, it was really great. I'm sure they got their money's worth since it was free. So yeah.
That's great.
It was a little embarrassing.
It's awesome.
Sounds fun.
Just background noise, you know?
Well, Laura, I have not heard from Nathan or Casey. I don't know if you have.
I have not.
But we do have quorum.
All right. Well, we can go ahead and get started with that. So I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And it looks like we have a couple of visitors here for one of our agenda items on the Northeast Community Center proposal. And are there any proposed agenda items, adoptions or changes? Okay, I will read the land acknowledgement statement that we have now. We gather here on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chirilla Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds. Identifying themselves as blush of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude for the land, river, and peoples that have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship with the people of the Spokane Tribe and all those who share this land. All right. So our first item for action is approval of the May 2021 Board Minutes.
I move that we, that we approve the May Board Minutes as presented.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Right, hearing none, motion passes. And now can I have a motion for the May 2021 Bills and Contributions?
Yes, I'm good. I am moving toward that right here on schedule. Hold on a second. I move that we approve the bills and contributions in the amount of, well, I'm still getting there. Well, you can just tell me what the number is. Oh, there it is. I'm sorry, I still haven't.
Jim, that number is $5,559,473.67.
Thank you. That's what I saw. So moved.
And I second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. And now we have the financial report. I believe that's Nicole.
It is. Thank you, Laura. Good evening, everyone. So for this May, we did receive our first allocation of the levy lift dollars. The amount was 837,496. And the, the second and final allocation for 2020, for 2021 is expected this November. That's good. Now our number of days of operating costs and available cash and investments is at 143 days. And for the expenditure trend, so in May, our overall expenditures were normal and routine in nature totaling $663,761. Of that amount, 78% was for personnel, which is 515,431. We spent $53,368 for books and materials costs. Also, our inter-fund expenses totaled $21,051, which does include the second quarter charges. And for business office news, the city of Spokane is going to see a sales tax rate go from the current 8.9% to, to a full round 9%, beginning on July 1st. The, the business office staff, we did inform other SPL staff who regularly review and approve invoices so that they can anticipate for that change. This increase does not have a significant monetary impact to our annual budgeted expenditures. And also, recently, recently, we did receive an update from the city regarding the new asset tracking system. So although they, they say they are getting close to going live with the software and providing us the new RFID tags, there's not yet a, a firm date scheduled for, for that move. So we just want to ensure that we stay on, on track with our, with our asset inventory tracking. So we're going to actually go ahead and proceed with using the original asset tags. So once we, we get those new tags from, from the city, we're then going to organize a transfer of getting those tags switched out. So I'm going to now open up for any questions before Penny begins with the bond.
I have a question, Nicole. In looking at the expenditures trend graph, I noticed that particularly March, April, May, even June, the, the numbers were, the, you know, the bars are significantly higher in, in 2019 versus 2020 and 2021. And I'm wondering if that a pandemic difference that we were seeing there? Or if we actually have had a reduction in our spending over those months?
So some of it's pandemic related. Mostly I would attribute it to bond, bond construction projects. We have maintained quite a, a lengthy list of, of open vacant positions during that time. Sorry. There's, there's a few other factors, but overall, yes, our spending is down. We don't, we're not seeing a lot of repairs and maintenance costs and things like that.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other thoughts or questions?
All right. Well, thank you very much, Nicole. Penny, do you want to give us the bond?
Just to add on a little bit, another factor is when the projects are under construction, I'm funding the utility costs and those things through the bond. So operations isn't occurring. Some of those costs that we would typically be seeing. So that lends to some of that difference. As far as May goes in the bond, 4.9 million. That's what we paid out. It was like in our top three months of expenditure flows. So very busy, needless to say. In January, Charis presented an action item to the board. And that was following a safety consultant's recommendation to add fall protection to the children's area. You might remember that. So we did finalize an amendment to the Lucy Creative Contract in May for $137,000. And Lucy is the supplier for that product. It's Playtime LLC. And in fact, Shadle's got the children's area going in right now. So it's, it's happening. In December 2020, we took two actions to the board. One was to procure furniture and shelving and purchase that up to the maximum budget. And a second request was to do the same for technology. So I've given you a list of what's been happening since that action was approved. So if you look on the left side, you'll see public service furniture. We've issued 19 purchase orders for public service furniture packages in May. That represents about one third of the overall budget of 6.6 million. And I'm happy to say that all but three small purchase orders came from cooperatives, which is, that was our hope and, and it's, it's proving to be successful. On the right side, you'll see the technology purchases, 16 purchase orders. You're going to see those, a lot of those happened in December. So the moment we had board approval, those purchases were initiated because of concerns over technology availability. So all of those items have been purchased through cooperatives and Washington State contracts. We didn't have any unexpected contracts executed under the special signing authority. And if you want to go to the next page, if you're following along, our topic of the month is central branch. And I have Jason Johnson joining me in just a moment. Before I turn it over to him though, this is a $32 million project. And we are actually 86% encumbered or, or already spent out of that 32 million. And the remaining 4 point million is just our furniture shelving and our construction, remaining construction costs. Walker Construction is the contractor. Their contract currently is at 22.8 million with three change orders. Our remaining 2.1 million for construction and change orders. That will, we already know some things that are going to flow through that. You might recall that several months ago, we hired a consultant to do testing on the curtain wall. And that testing revealed some roofing issues. And so we'll, we'll have repairs for that. We're also going to put some solar panels up there while that work is happening. We'll do some work on the walkway that connects to Nordstrom, to the library. And we've got owner furnished equipment that needs to be purchased and, and typical with renovation, we have new things popping up all the time. So Jason is here and he wants to give you some highlights of the, of the project from his angle.
I'm sorry, Penny, before we go on, I just have one question. I know that we're finding at the credit union that our furniture orders and such, that there's a very long lead time to them. In these furniture purchases that I see were done May and June, were you given any kind of a lead time? Is there going to be any kind of delay that will affect any of our opening dates?
That is a topic I think that Andrew is going to be discussing. So appreciate the question. You're right on, right on mark, Mary.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Jason.
No problem. Some foreshadowing there. Well, thanks for having me here. Construction on the Central Library is buzzing right along. It's a huge building. Remember it's 120,000 square feet. And there's a lot of work to do. And what I'm going to do is kind of take you on a quick walk through the things that I'm most excited about in the space. And I think from what I understand, a lot of you or all of you will be going to see the space on Thursday, right, Andrew? Or sometime.
You got two plus mayor's cabinet.
Okay. So some of you will go see all this stuff. These pictures aren't, I didn't take them this week. So there's, you're going to see more work done after, from what you see here. But I'm going to try to share a screen right now. So let's see how technology works.
I noticed a big chunk out of it as I was driving home today. That whole upper front has been taken right out. I can see the inside of the patient.
Does everybody, everybody see this now on the screen or is it filming?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Well, these are some images of the outside that you're talking about, the big front right there on the chunk. They're, they're building that, the putting in all the steel for our big signage right there on that southeast corner. So they have that all opened up. It's kind of interesting to see. But I'm going to take you in through the front door there. And what you're seeing on your left here is actually the space for where the cafe is going to be. It's hard to imagine here, but it's like we're standing in the vestibule of the, of the library here, I believe. It's hard to tell on these pictures, but that'll be a place you can go even before hours. There'll be a service window right there in the vestibule that people can stop in and get coffee. And you can sit at the bar here that you can't see. Beyond that is where then the business lab will be relocated too. So it's a really good location to have a coffee shop and the co-working space. Mark's going to drink a lot of coffee over the course of the next few years, I think. On your right is another exciting part of it. We've opened up that entire floor. So if you remember the first floor of the downtown library, it was meeting rooms and that was all the public had access and it was all staff. And now this is the new stairway going from one to two. And if you look through all the scaffolding, you can see all the way up to the top of the building there. You're, you can see from the third floor down to the first floor. Couldn't get a picture that really did justice to how epic that, that whole, how grand that scale is, but it's really cool to see how open everything is right now. We're going to move up those stairs to the second floor, which they're doing work right now, as you can see, like on finishing up the ceilings and putting in lights. But that will be the home of the River Rumpus area that you can see off the drawings on your right will live right there in that window. And it's going to be, I mean, that view, as everybody knows, is spectacular. And that's such a cool idea to have. Give that view to the kids on that floor and they can be, have fun in the slides and the things like that. That's going to be a really exciting part of that floor for sure. So I'm waiting for, another exciting part of the second floor is this social stair, which is really getting close to looking like it's done lately. But that is as you walk in, what used to be the main entrance to the second floor there, it's going to be right out in front of you. Be a great place to sit down and read a book or have some poetry readings or small events where you can use those as, as seating areas. And it just, yeah, it doesn't look like this. You go in there, it does not feel like the same, same building that we used to be in. So it's pretty exciting to watch as all these things start coming to life on there. You can't use that social stair. Maybe, maybe they'll allow the board members to, but so far you're not allowed to climb on that. But it's pretty cool. And then off to the left there is where the majority of our collection and everything will be. And there's going to be some study rooms back where the Northwest Room used to be directly behind this, this stairway. There's going to be a bunch of little small conference type rooms that people can use. So it's, it looks very much like a different building. The third floor, they tore down and rebuilt our stage in what we are now, what is now called Inhuet, Huet. I can't, is that close enough? Inhui, Huet?
Inhui, yeah.
Yeah, Hall. The stage is bigger, better, higher. It's got a ramp on it now too. It's got all kinds of technology built into it. So really important. You could see that Walker, they have the stage, but they didn't use it for their, their, their little event apparently that they were doing. This picture was taken on. I think they missed an opportunity to be on the new stage. But it kind of gives you an idea of all the stuff you can do up there. And it's going to be, that's where Lilac City Live will return. There's not going to be, with the new technology they're putting in there, with the new sound system, with everything we're going to get in place there. It's going to be, you're going to be hard pressed to find a better stage in the city of Spokane. And that view is just incredible still. So it's fun to be up there and imagining all the things we're going to do on that floor. And the other thing that I am very excited about, and this does, these pictures don't show you anything about how cool this is going to be, is our studios, especially the recording studio that's going to be up there on the third floor. It's, it's coming together really well and it's going to be state of the art. We're going to be able to record all of the programs that happen on our stage and mix them and send them to the radio station next door if we want to. And they can broadcast live on the air. We can have full bands recording albums in this space. We're going to have the video lab will be next to it where they can, we can film all this stuff happening and have high quality audio and video. Teach people how to use all this gear. Let the community come in, record albums, work with Andy, our music education specialist, to take guitar lessons, drum lessons, bass lessons in this state of the art space. It's going to be, yeah, there's no library that has what we're going to have at the Central Library. So it is that, this is a very exciting project. And if you, when you go in there, you'll really get the view of the scale of everything and how well-designed this building is, much better than the pictures that I'm showing you here are. It's, it's a game changer, I think, for, for Spokane, for Spokane Public Library, really. And I'm excited to see all the stuff we're going to do in it. But I don't want to take too much of your time, so I'm going to wrap it up there. And if you have questions specifically for me, you can ask them now.
Jason, I did have a question. It brought up by Bridge discussion earlier. Are we going to still have three main entrances to the library? Or, or just the two?
There's three and there's an entrance, I mean, there's an entrance from the skywalk. Yeah. And then there's the.
And there's, but there's two on the first floor.
Yeah, there'll be a one on the south, this, the norm, the, the one we've had on the south, the east corner. And then there's a new entrance over on the north west side. And there'll be a canopy and an entrance over there. And that'll enter right by where the big meeting rooms and everything are going to be downstairs. Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome. That should have stopped sharing, right? You don't see anything anymore. All right.
Yeah.
It worked.
All right. Well, I think then we are ready for a construction project update from Matt.
Yeah. Hi, thanks.
Hello.
I think Jason nailed it. Gate. Sorry.
I just said welcome. Yes.
Oh, sorry. I think Jason nailed it by calling it a game changer. The other phase one projects are really, really impressive. I mean, we're starting, some of you have been out and seen them recently. They're really starting to look finished and they're really incredible buildings. Very impressed with what the design teams and contractors have come up with. And, you know, we're slowly, slowly transitioning from construction to closeout. We're doing that with startup and testing, testing and balancing, commissioning, all these systems that have to be checked out and verified. A lot of that is going on right now. There's even been some owner training going on. Things of that nature that are typical at the end of it, towards the end of a job. We've also had punchless work starting. That's where the architect goes through and makes a list of things that aren't quite right or need to be verified. Contractors have started that on their own, which is required for the contract. And the architects have done some pre punch list on some of the projects as well. And main, main punch lists are coming up in the next week or two. So that's a good sign that things are starting, it's starting to wrap up. It's, it's slow going. It seems like every project has a couple of items that are delayed for whatever reason, COVID or shortest materials. For example, Shadle, we're waiting for, I'm drawing a blank, a nano wall system to come in. Can't finish the construction until that comes in. That's going to come in in the middle of June. And then I think at Liberty Park, we're waiting, we're at the hive, we're waiting for a couple of lubers to show up. Can't finish the testing and balancing until the lubers show up. So we're having some impacts to the project, but not significant. But it seems to be, it's almost like we're having more impacts related to COVID now than we did six months, a year ago, which seems, you know, who would have thought? So that's kind of the status of the projects that really come in. The carpet finishes are going in. Signage is going up and probably, it's probably in place now in the hive. And so things are, things are wrapping up. Any, any questions for me on the progress?
Matt, you said that you're waiting on some lubers. Is that related to the HVAC?
Yeah, yes. Their exterior lubers.
Matt, I had, are the, are the children's areas being installed now on all, on all of the projects?
I don't think all of them. Shadle is, as Penny mentioned, I think Shadle is almost done. I have to check with the gym on the other ones, how soon the next batch comes in, but within the next week, maybe someone else knows. Andrew, any idea whether we're starting? Yeah.
I don't, but I saw.
Liberty is going in this week. Sorry. Liberty is going in the 21st. The truck comes in with the, with the
Okay.
The parts, I guess.
And I drive my shell and I can see the children's area set up. It's pretty cool. You can see, you can see it from Wellesley. There is kind of a metal wall that's covering part of it now on the outside. And I'm not sure if that's a permanent thing. Do you know?
Yeah, I think there is. Yeah, Shadle, yeah, like three wall panels that are solid.
Right.
Those are, those are permanent. Yeah.
Yeah. But before that went up, you could see right in and you could see all the children's area setup. It was very cool.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt? Okay. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is the chairman's report. I just have a short report to confirm that the trustees received a couple of letters in relation to the Northeast Community Center proposal. And so we'll hear from our guests about that later on in the agenda. And then there is a request to appoint a subcommittee to consider that proposal more thoroughly. So that's the extent of my report. So I will now invite Andrew to share his report.
All right. Well, you know, you'll notice that on this month's written report, I didn't include the opening dates. I did for the past three months and it was feeling really good to do that because they were still true. And now we're here in June and boy, Mary, you hit it right on the head with that question. You know, what we're hearing right now is it's, it's, it's not the furniture necessarily that we're, we're going to be seeing delays on. And if we weren't a library, we'd be doing pretty dang good. We'd still probably be on time. But the fact is we are a library and what we're going to see the delays on is the shelving. We are right now, we have just received our bid packages in from the vendors. We've been trying to really hone in on these for the past couple of weeks to, to get a, a better timeline out. And we just received those bid packages today. So we'll be going through those timelines with Hill to see what those adjusted dates will be. The good news is that the hive will still open on time. There's no books in the hive. So we will still be able to open that facility on time. The artists will still have their spaces. We put that call out for the artists. And that closed a couple of weeks ago. So we're still on time with that, which is, you know, we feel very, very thankful for. You know, we have been doing these projects through a global pandemic. And up to this point, they, they have been on time. We're probably looking, you know, at possibly up to a couple of months delay for opening. Just in the way that you need to stage an opening of a library, you want to get your shelving in before you get your furniture in. So we're, we're trying to work through those logistics. Shelving is sharp. You don't want to ruin your furniture, getting the shelving in later. But we'll be. But we'll be working with Hill to see what sort of creative solutions we can come up with in order to expedite the openings of the facilities. It might be that we put a little bit more time and effort into one facility so we can open that up earlier and the others might lag. It really just depends on how those delivery dates for the the shelving looks. So we will keep the board updated as we learn more on what the, the actual impact to the timelines are going to be. It's, you know, we were feeling so great and so confident about these opening dates and now here we are, just a couple of months from where they would be. And it kind of takes the air out of the sails. Because we, we have been so lucky with our timelines and with the construction. But in the end, we want a good experience for the customers. We want a good first experience for the customers. And that's what we really need to keep in mind as, as we're going through these. You know, in the end, they are going to have a great experience when they do open to the public. So we're going to keep our heads high. We're going to continue to be creative and we are going to deliver on that promise to the community. So a lot of this is out of our hands at this point, you know, you've read. If you've read the paper, you're seeing issues with steel, issues with wood. That's the impact that we're seeing and it's mainly around the manufacturing with the steel that, that we're finding. So any questions with that unfortunate news?
Yeah, I, I think, Andrew, you're absolutely right. This is something that is out of our control and it has been well communicated. I think to, you know, to everyone that delays in manufacturing, delays in goods and goods, delivery. And I think that just the communication to our community about that, I think that I don't think anyone, I, I would hope that no one would be putting any blame as long as we communicate it appropriately. I think that like, I, like I said, I think that anyone who reads the newspaper, listens to the news, knows where we're at right now with, with manufacturing, with delivery of goods. And so I don't, I think that we're okay.
Also, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've, we've talked about the opening dates amongst ourselves, but we haven't really announced, have we announced public opening dates?
We haven't, it was in some publications. I can let Amanda jump in with that. She's going to have a better sense. We were able to pull back some things that we had those dates on. But Amanda, did you want to address that specifically?
All right. The, the dates were published in a couple of places. But pulled back in others, we haven't made any major announcements aside from that. There was an ad in the Parks and Rec publication and also in the teen magazine that we made for summer reading, but otherwise we were able to catch those. And like Mary said, our, our strat, communication strategy with this will be direct and honest communication, just to keep the community informed about, about the situation.
And this allows you more time, Amanda, to arrange for those bagpipes at Shadle.
It's, it's noted and on the list, Mary.
Every time.
Fact is, is that we, we haven't really widely broadcast opening dates. So we don't really have anything to apologize for at this point, really. I mean, we're not going to be disappointing people about an opening date. They didn't even know existed.
No. And, and we were looking at more soft openings anyways, just because again, COVID, we didn't know what the situation would be like. Could people gather? You know, so it's, it's a, you know, we're, we're learning and more and more how to just roll with change. And, and that's just the story that's going to continue to be the story for the next year for us as, as we're working through this. Any other questions on shelving? We could just go digital. We could. Wouldn't be a good idea, but we could. All right. Other updates that I had, we are discontinuing curbside service. The requests for that have gone down dramatically. So that will no longer be available in the communitico. If people still want to call in and have us bring out the materials, we will still do that. There are still some of the population that are at risk. So we'll still continue to accommodate with that. But we're also anticipating that the state will open fully by June 30. So we are planning for that. We haven't seen any updated guidance on what that will look like at this point. But we are targeting a return to pre pandemic hours, pre pandemic computer access levels, 100% capacity inside and offering up our community rooms to the public. We're going to hold off on our in-person programming until September at the earliest. With the exception of, you know, possibly at partnership sites like schools. We're working with them, in fact, very recently in getting the STA youth passes out. But following the school protocols as we're in those facilities, we may be offering some outdoor programming later on. But that is all to be determined at this time. You'll be hearing a little bit later on our summer reading program. And along with that, I just mentioned the STA youth passes, those are back. We're very excited. We weren't able to offer those up last year. But that has returned in, I think, a bigger, better way with the county libraries participating and and actually full access for the youth countywide. Pretty exciting program. Really proud to be a part of that. You'll also note that our Mac and Mobius museum passes are back. That's exciting too. A real great sign that the community is, is opening up. And, and we're getting better numbers with vaccinations and lower case rates. And I do, you know, I didn't put the opening dates on, on my report, but I am asking you to mark your calendars because I hope to see you at Lucky U. When we have the triumphant return of Lilac City Live in September. So it'd be very awesome to see our trustees there when that comes back online. I know Jason's crew has been working and very excited to, to be offering up our talk show. Should be pretty fun. For diversity, equity and inclusion. June is Pride Month. We reached out to the LGBTQ plus community and asked them to share some of their favorite books or books they felt were important for others to read. Which I thought was a great approach for us and getting that local feel and community connection out there. And then we're also, we'll be working with our admin team in utilizing the DEI lens to evaluate our policies. So there may be some policies coming in front of the board in the coming months as we practice that and, and include the DEI lens more in, in how we're going about our business. And then the last two things, we have Canopy, they are the vendor that offer up our video streaming services. They were just bought out by Overdrive. And so you'll recall a few months ago, recorded books was bought out by Overdrive. So that streamlined the service for our audiobooks and our e-magazines into the Overdrive app. I imagine we'll be seeing a similar trend or functionality streamlining with Canopy as well over the coming year. We really don't know how it's going to look. We just had heard this announcement, but I, I imagine we will see some changes. And finally, our star spotlight for staff for May went to Gordon Goldner. He's with our community technology program, community technology department. And this is like, it's not just a star. This is like a universe of stars. Because when we switched over to Lynda.com, switched over to LinkedIn Learning, we got some really generic URLs for our records, which really isn't help for, helpful for customers to navigate to the resource. And Gordon was able to fix that after the vendor basically refused to fix the problem. And then he posted the solution up on listserv and has received so many thanks from libraries across the country in finding a solution to the problem. So that's part of the, the beauty of technology and people being on listserv is one library can solve a problem for many libraries throughout the country. So huge appreciation to Gordon for that. Any questions for me?
This isn't a question. I just wanted to add, thank you and acknowledge the friends of the library for funding those summer reading magazines.
Thank you, Jim.
Andrew, you talked about the Lucky U Lounge, Lilac City Live in September. Do you have a date? Or Jason, do you have a date on that?
The third Thursday, whatever, whatever that date is, I could look it up. But yeah, they're always going to be the third Thursdays.
Okay.
And we're scheduled there September through May until hopefully the opening of Central.
Third Thursday. Very good. Thank you.
And just to add to the shelving sort of delays, we're not anticipating Central Libraries opening to be delayed at this time. We think we're far enough ahead in the production schedule that we'll be able to stick to what we were anticipating.
Good deal.
Any other questions for Andrew? Okay, let's see. So the next agenda item is our council liaison report, although I didn't see Kate on the list of participants. So, all right.
And Laura, before we move on, I may have to step away for childcare. I got a toddler jumping around. But we have a quorum without me. So am I, we're good to go. I'm not going to ruin the entire meeting if I
Oh, no, it's ruined.
Thank you for your time. I'm sorry about.
You're going to, you're going to get appointed to a subcommittee.
All right. Have a good day.
All right. All right. Now we have the communications report. Amanda?
Yes, hello. So some of what I'm going to say is a little repetitive from what Andrew was talking about, but as you see my report, summer reading launched on June 1 and it will be live through August 31. And there's an online experience and the youth and teen magazine. And Katie will speak to you more about that later in this meeting and show you some, or show you some photos of what that magazine looks like. But I will say that I think it's just a really fun way to, to reach youth this summer and, you know, and Katie was really creative coming up with this in a year when we didn't know if we were going to be able to do in-person events. And like Jim said, we're grateful to the friends for, for funding a portion of the printing for that. And another neat thing to notice, and you'll see in the images, is that we were able to use a lot of the Lucy Creative artwork that will, you know, kids will see in the physical spaces and they'll have gotten a preview it in this magazine. So it's kind of a neat way to make our bond dollars go even further in our marketing materials and our, and our activity kit. So I'm looking forward to having Katie present more on that today. We also, as Andrew mentioned, renewed our access to Mac and Mobius passes. And I'll let you know that Mobius is already pretty much booked out for the next 30 days. So if you want to get one of those Mobius passes, you know, you might need to get on, they're available 30 days in advance. So you might need to just set your timer to get on, you know, in the morning and see if you can snag one of those passes. STA Summer Bus Passes also launched today and I checked in with the team and so far 570 of those passes have been checked out today. Today was the opening day for that SPL, SCLD and Liberty Park Library. And the youth services team is doing an amazing job doing outreach at local high schools and middle schools, going into the schools to get the cards into the hands of the youth instead of expecting all of them to come to the library, though of course they're welcome to do that as well. On the social media front, Facebook, we saw a really big bump in engagement this week, this month and impressions and awareness. And I think it was just, we just had a couple of really popular posts about things that we're doing with our new buildings. And so it was nice to see some engagement bumps there. Instagram, we saw a small boost in engagement as well. Specifically on posts about bond progress. So people are, are interested and curious about that. And on YouTube, we, this is interesting to me. We continue to average 4,000 views a month on YouTube. So people talk about Zoom fatigue and screen fatigue, but people are still watching our content, you know, reaching 4,000 people a month is not a small number. I mean, it's more than would be coming to some of our month, you know, in-person monthly events. So that's, that's cool to see people continuing to consume that content online. And then it was a quiet month for earned media. We were kind of mentioned tangentially into two articles, one about the Queer Art Walk, because Eva Silverstone, our arts education specialist is heavily involved in planning that through Spokane Arts. And then also one about KYRS, looking forward, mentioning us as their future location at the Central Library. And that concludes my report for today. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Amanda. All right. So now we're to the new business section. The Northeast Community Center proposal. And Andrew, are you going to introduce that topic for us?
If I can unmute, yes, I've been only doing this for a year and three months, but sure. Well, we do have some very special guests. We have Dave Richardson and Jenna Ray from the Northeast Community Center. Dave is their executive director of the community center and Jenna is project manager at the Zone. What's your official title, Jenna? I'm sorry.
That works or associate director works too, whatever, whatever it is.
I know you keep people in line a lot. So they are here to talk about the Northeast Community Center's proposal for the current Hilliard Library. The trustees have received a letter regarding Hilliard Library and its future state. So I am going to turn it over to Dave and Jenna and then maybe if the trustees have any questions, Dave and Jenna are here for that as well.
Thank you, Andrew. We sure appreciate the time. Board of Trustees, Matt Sandrin, our board chair of the Northeast Community Center, advances his apologies for not being able to be here to address you directly regarding your proposal. Like Andrew said, I am Dave Richardson, the executive director of the Northeast Community Center. And on behalf of my board, the Shaw Campus Leadership Team, MultiCare and other vested committee partners, I'd like to thank you for your time today. Like you at your Hilliard Library facility, our footprint at the Northeast Community Center has reached capacity. Our partners and residents tell us that there's an immediate and emergent need for a community behavioral health center. But we're out of physical space and despite Spokane having a robust construction, construction trade, we've just not been able to find a building structure. Your gift could be the solution to an important state community need. The pandemic and mental health may seem separate, but research is showing the known gap in mental health services for low income families is only increasing at a time and community wide demand for these same services is also dramatically increasing. We need to serve our kids now, and I know that together we can invest in needed services that will make a big difference. I know from the listening today, you've got one or two projects that you may be working on. We also know that due diligence takes time and our only sense of urgency is that we are hoping to take advantage of current COVID relief funds dedicated to improving mental health. Our pledge is to work together to help create a state of consideration to timely move our requests forward and create the best possible outcomes for the residents of Northeast Spokane and both of our organizations. I would like to thank Andrew Chance for open and realistic dialogue that has helped us to, to frame our requests. And I respectfully ask for your consideration to grant the former Hilliard Library, the Northeast Community Center, for the purpose of creating a mental health and counseling center for low income residents in Northeast Spokane. Thank you.
So I have a question. Dave, is there, do you know the timeframe as far as when? you need to use the COVID relief funds in order to take advantage of those, or when you need a decision from us in order to stay on that timeline?
It's been a pretty fluid target, and so again, the sooner the better. We're hoping to put things in and get our applications. We've been fortunate to keep Kate and Michael Cathcart informed of kind of our plans and programs. And they're kind of watching that deadline for us.
I have a question, probably really for Andrew. Could you remind us the status of that? Do we, do we own the building and the land? What is the situation there?
Yeah, it's a situation. So we do not own the land. We own the building. So that's very similar to the East Side Library, where, you know, we're in a better situation now because now we, we don't own Liberty Parkland, that is parkland. But in exchange for the East Side Library, we were, we were able to get the land that the Hive sits on, which makes the future state asset of the Hive, you know, in future years, much more attractive for us in the future.
And it is my understanding, by the way, hi, Dave. It's my understanding that the Northeast Community Center owns their building, but not the land as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and does the city own the land that you're on as well?
Correct. We are on the same bonded parcel.
Okay. Okay, and the other question that I have, and maybe this is inappropriate to bring up right now, but has there been any discussion about having the community, a community mental health center located close to the middle school? Has there been any discussion about that?
Jenna?
Yes, actually, we've been discussing it with the school since January of 2019. We did a very extensive survey of families and also the mental health therapists and school personnel. And at that time, it is an eight-week wait to find from intake to first appointment anything in Northeast for youth. That time is now extended past eight weeks. So if you wanted to go to Frontier Behavioral Health right now, and actually, this information is three weeks old, they are scheduling the end of September. And if you have a middle schooler who is in crisis, that is a lifetime. So the school has been asking, and actually, we have Children's Home Society, they primarily do play therapy, so very young children. They also treat some children that are older in the home. And we have on occasion had Excelsior use some of the space at the community center. The, the middle school, especially Shaw Middle School, was so excited and would have staff walk students across the street during school so that they could receive the therapy because transportation is often a barrier to get to other offices. And so they are in full support, and that's why you see that they actually authored that second MultiCare letter. It was their narrative and their data that was included in that MultiCare letter because they are so excited about this opportunity for their families.
Thank you very much.
I have another question for Andrew again. When we started the Hilliard Project, do, do we have anything in the, is there something in the budget? I mean, will this affect our budget? Did, did, did we include some sort of reimbursement for that building in our budget? How is this going to affect?
We have not, no. That's not part of our, our, you know, our budgeted earnings or anything like that, so.
You know, again, I'd just like to thank you for your consideration. This is definitely something I think that will impact for many, many years to come. And I know how busy you all are, and so if there's anything else that we can do to provide any additional information, or again, if we can help to balance your gift and advocate for, I guess, like I said, the consideration to benefit local organizations, please let us know. We'd be very happy to do that.
Well, yeah, I, I think we're going to select a subcommittee, and they will definitely be, you know, sitting down with you and talking about how this could all work out.
Again, to Laura's point and question, the sooner the better. We do have MultiCare in as a, as a partner right now, and would love to be able to put together some type of proposal to lock in potential COVID relief funds.
And they were very sorry they couldn't join. They're actually filming a piece about the mental health crisis right now for the media that happened to be scheduled right at this same time. But they would also like to sit down with a subcommittee or answer any questions. Their foundation is willing to do the interior, you know, remodel in order to provide that space for expanded services on campus.
So I assume that when we talk about transferring the building, it would be in an as-is condition? Okay.
Yeah, we don't have any money in our budget to do the upkeep as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions for Dave or Jenna? All right, so the next agenda item is to appoint a subcommittee to focus on the proposal and determination of what we're going to do with the property. So we need to select two, two trustees to serve on that committee. I, I'm willing to serve on that committee.
I would be willing to do it, too.
All right, so.
I would also be willing to do it, so I think that, I think that however that works out.
All right, well, now there's three of us, Andrew. What do you want to do?
Geez, I don't know. Availability is going to be of the essence to figure this out in a timely. You know, it is Spokane summer. We can't have all of our meetings at the lake. I know, so. So is there any scheduling conflicts, any large, long trips that any of the trustees are looking at that would stop any discussions from happening over the summer that maybe they wouldn't be a great candidate? I don't know. We could also set one of you up as an alternate. We could, you know, put, we could technically put all three of you on the committee, have one of you serve as an alternate for scheduling purposes, so we can get this discussion going quicker. If that works, we can get the, we can get like a doodle poll out there to get some times together to discuss more with Dave and his group. And I imagine we are also going to need some discussion with counsel as well, as well as our legal team. So there's, I see multiple meetings happening here to do this discussion in a, in a responsible way for the trustees. Any scheduling issues with Jim, or Mary, or Laura?
I have a week out of town set for the end of July. That'll be after the, you know, the third week meeting that we typically have, and but other than that, I'm around, so.
And I have the week of July 5th, I'll be out of town.
Okay.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. All right, so how about we do that, then? We'll appoint all three of you. It's just only two of you can show up to the meeting. So we'll just see how the scheduling works out and just keep each other informed. But no decisions will be made, and we'll make a recommendation, you know, to the full board in not sure when.
And understand that if, 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 you know, Laura and Jim want to do this, I don't need to be on it. I just wanted to let you know that I'm, that I'm willing to, to be on it. I think it's, I think it's going to be important work.
Okay.
Well, I think that it might be useful to have Mary as an alternate, so if there is a conflict that Jim or I have, that there could be two trustees who could continue to have meetings during this period of time, because I do think that we would be dropping the ball if we're not trying to move fast in order to be able to take advantage of the COVID funds. So we need to, you know, have, do our due diligences as rapidly as we can.
So what you're saying, Andrew, is that all three of us can't physically meet together or even in the virtual space, but we can keep each other informed through written communication? Is that correct?
So long as it's just, it's not a back and forth correspondence, and send an update, and I imagine you would just include the rest of the trustees, actually. But for the presence of talking or meeting with legal or anything like that, we would limit it to just two.
I understand, okay.
And then we have a good diversity of perspective as well, you know, and you know, by the time that we're able to bring this to the full board, everyone, well, the three of you, which is a majority, will have a really good idea of what the options are.
And so as far as just keeping one another informed, in other words, if Jim and I are able to go to a meeting and Laura is not able to, or or some other combination of that, we would just do perhaps some kind of written report to the full board about that meeting?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay, so you will know what we're doing to keep us from doing something we're not supposed to do, right?
I will keep you in line.
All right, you try, you try. I'll fell apart just now. Person committee ending up being three, and that's probably my fault, but.
Well, shouldn't we appoint Casey, too?
Yeah.
Here, so.
I kind of feel like you guys are fighting over doing my review, but no one ever volunteers for that, so.
All right, so, so let's see. So we need a motion to appoint, she would do Jim and I and Mary as the alternate for the committee?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Oh, you're muted, Jim.
You were still muted.
We still, we still didn't hear you.
I so moved.
I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. All right, any votes? Oh, hearing none. Motion passes. All right, and now we move on to the Central Branch MOU with the Transitions New Leaf Kitchen and Cafe, and that's Jason.
Hello again. We've been having conversations for what feels like years. It is years. Time doesn't seem to exist in the same way it did before this, so I don't know how long has passed. I had really short hair when we started this whole thing.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't, Jason, never.
House. But we have finally hammered out a MOU to have that cafe space that we talked about in the, I've shown you around there, to have Transitions New Leaf Kitchen and Cafe operate that space. And I think it's such a great fit for the library to have this organization there. They do job training for women with barriers to employment, and they do long commercial kitchen training at a different site, but this site would be their shorter-term barista and customer service training, and their mission to end homelessness and poverty for women and children in Spokane. They currently have a, a space at the Catholic Charities Building, but we've been talking about this space because they're going to have a lot more foot traffic here, and it's going to be a great, great thing. There's all kinds of other opportunities for us to partner with this organization, especially with the midhouse. So basically, we have an MOU that needs to be approved here.
Well, I move that we approve the MOU for Transitions New Leaf Kitchen and Cafe to occupy the cafe space for a three-year term that will begin upon completion of construction and shall commence after three years.
Second.
All right.
And I also know that Mike Piccolo has already signed off on this, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Okay, and now we have the Library Capital Bond Fund, Central Branch Food Service Equipment Purchase. Jason, that's you again.
Me again. Yeah, we will need to purchase some food service equipment to, to put into that space as well as to use on our, we have that service area on the third floor that will be used for events like Lilac City Live or community events and things like that. So there's equipment that the library wants to purchase in order to, to outfit those spaces for the future, and I believe it's all listed on this long list of things there.
Sorry, Jason, I was going to ask a question. I didn't know if you were done.
I am done.
So my question is that we're going to have, I understand that this, this will be used by the Folks and Transitions Cafe, is that correct? But also used for events in the hall. Is this for any caterers that come to the hall, or do we have a plan to? How, for that kind of an event, how will this kitchen area be used?
Two separate areas. The, there's one area, which is the cafe space down on the first floor, and that won't be used. New Leaf, I'll take that back, New Leaf might cater events and things like that for us. No one will be going in there making espressos or anything without them. On the third floor, there is another separate service area, and that includes a couple refrigerators and some tap handles for for serving beer at events and a cooler and things like that. So that would be more operated by people, though the foundation would use it, or we'd use it to, for certain events. People that are renting out that space could use it on their own to serve as well. But they're kind of separate spaces, and if that makes sense.
And will it be then our responsibility to maintain this equipment? Will it be the library's responsibility to maintain and repair the equipment?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jason, is the, the cafe going to have food, or is it basically a coffee bar?
They won't, they don't have a kitchen to cook food there, but they will serve food that's made at their, their kitchen space. So I don't think they fully laid out their menu of what they're going to do. There'll be a lot of pastries that they can cook and maybe some like wrapped sandwiches and things like that that they'll do, but there's no cooking on site.
Well. Well. I move to approve the procurement and purchase of the food service equipment for the Central Branch in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Second, but I also have another question for Jason before. Are there liquor control issues up on the third floor with this, with this?
Yeah, there are. We, we've served beer at Lilac City Live for the last few years. There's a special event license that, that the foundation procures. You can do 12 of those a month, so any 501s and 301s can actually get these. So there's very specific laws. Yeah, we're not just gonna have a bar that's open all the time for people. It's only at special events that we've required, that we've gotten a license for, or other organizations that are using our space could qualify for those licenses as well.
And those volunteers are also trained and follow the compliance for the, the laws as well.
Yes, I got carded.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so all in favor? Aye. No one is opposed, so it passes unanimously. All right, and now we have our summer reading presentation, and Katie Rickard is going to do that for us. Welcome, Katie.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Tested my audio. Okay, great. So just Amanda suggested I give a little bit of an introduction for myself. So my name is Katie Rickard, and I started at the library in February of 2020, if you can remember the before times, that's when I started. And so I started as Youth Services Librarian, and then when Ellen announced that she was leaving, there was a little bit of a reorganization of the library, if you can remember that, of went from regional to kind of this kind of central situation. And that emerged to two new positions, so the Youth Services Manager and Adult Services Manager, so I am now the Youth Services Manager, and then my counterpart is Vanessa Strange, is the Adult Services Manager, and we are under, Jason is my boss, so. Hi, Jason. Anyway, so that's, that's where I'm at, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about summer reading, and I'm gonna share my screen also, and like Jason, I hope that my screen works. I've barely done this on, hold on one second. On Zoom, we're, we're, you know, we use Teams mostly, so that's kind of where I'm at. Let's see here. Are you seeing this? Who presents?
I can see it.
Okay, I should go back to the beginning. Okay. So this is our new, to a new summer reading magazine, so for this summer, so summer reading, like you know that every year we do something for summer reading, and for this year, it's like, what can we do? What can we expect for summer of 2021? So back in the fall, I had this idea that if we make these magazines, then at least we can rely that we can send out these magazines regardless of what COVID looks like, regardless of if we can have any in-person programming, we would have these magazines, it'd be great. And so I presented this to the Youth Services Team and to Amanda and the Communications Team, and they, everyone was on board, so this is great. And also then presented this to the friends, and they were on board also, so they helped contribute to buying these magazines, which we really appreciate. And so these magazines are a great way that we can get out into the community and be where kids are at, so regardless of like Zoom fatigue or whatever is going on, we can hand out these magazines, and we can do the things that we always want to do for summer reading, which is engagement, and so we're engaging people regardless if we, if we're having programming inside the building or not, so this is kind of the fun fun of that, and what I really love about it too is that it was a great way for me as this new person to the library to work with other people in the library, as it was a huge collaboration. So the content came from the Youth Services Librarians, and then the execution and all of the design came from the Communications Team, so Amanda and Skylar, so that's something that I've really loved, and so we can, you know, work on things like that in the future. So I'm gonna show you a little bit of what's inside the magazine. Let's see, okay, so the first page is here. On the top, we have the youth magazine, and you see a little maze, and that's kind of how for kids tracker, if they want to use this as a tracker, and on the bottom is the teen magazine, and then they can color in the stars and track their reading, so like years past, if you read 15 hours, you can come to the library and show us and tell us that you've read 15 hours, and you get a free prize book, which is also courtesy of the Friends of the Library. Sumi gave me some numbers, who purchases the Friends, the, the summer prize reading books, and she said that she got 29 boxes or 2,300 books, which equals 728 pounds of books for summer reading that we can hopefully pass out this summer through these, so kids can either track through these magazines, or they can do our, our Great Reading Venture online, or the, the GRA, is what we kind of call it on there, has a lot of activities, or all the activities are in the magazine are also online, so kids can kind of, they can earn their digital badge if they do, some of the activities are in the book. So this is another page that I really love, a little about me for the kids, so they can kind of get a little snapshot of who they were at whatever age they get this magazine, and then also for the teens, like a little bucket list, and I don't know, I kind of imagine them finding this in a few years, and you're like, oh, that's what I was interested in during the year of 2021. That's one of those pages, and then it's another great opportunity for us to show off our new Lucy creative characters too. So this is the page that we, we caught in time, if you can see, there's some, it says opening 2021 for, you know, Moose's Market and things like that, so we were able to get this before it went to the printer, and these are all of our characters, so it's one of our ways of introducing the characters to the kids. And, you know, getting people excited about those new children's spaces that we're so excited about too. And then in the teen magazine below, it, this is a page that's dedicated to the summer, the STA Summer Passes. So we went and we found some great places that kids can go to during the summer. And we're telling them what bus they can take and have a little map of Spokane, so they can utilize those STA passes, which today is Amanda Amanda mentioned is the launch of the Summer Passes, and we went to two high schools today, and we passed out 251 cards just at outreach at the schools, which was wonderful, and all the kids, I mean, we, I was at North Central, and we were outside, and the kids were just lined up for that during lunch, and so I'm really excited, we're, we're going to seven or eight different locations in 14 outreaches, because all of the schools are on these AB schedules, so each school we have to go to, we're going to twice, because there's an A, A schedule and a B schedule, so today was, I think, the B students, and tomorrow is the A students or something like that, but I'm going back to North Central tomorrow to, to catch those other kids that weren't there today. Okay, and there's another page, just utilizing things the Youth Services Staff know, so Kathy Bachin does really great astrology. Astronomy, not astrology, astronomy programs for, and this is a great astronomy page. And so this, there are going to be some Zoom programming that's based on the magazine also, and we'll have a couple of things that are in person but within collaboration with Riverfront Park, so we have a couple of storytimes that we're doing this summer, but it's within collaboration or, you know, in partnership with Riverfront Park. And, yeah, and then our back was said, big thank you to the Friends of the Library, and on both of these magazines too, we created a survey for kids to fill out if they would like, and so if we get a little bit of feedback, that would be great, because we really do hope that we can make these magazines in the future. Also, and so, yeah, and if we, we get anything, because this would be a great addition to our summer reading repertoire, whatever that looks like in 2022, which I hope looks different than 2021. Yeah, I think that that is about it. Does anyone have any questions for me in summer reading? Or STA cards? I can, I can field those also. Oh, show, I want to show this, this is not, I don't have a picture of this, but STA made this really great map, this kind of would be really small for you, of Spokane, that they pass out with the STA cards, which I thought was really cute, too.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, the magazines look terrific, really, really good.
Yeah, I really, I really love, love them, so that was, that was great. Stop sharing. Thank you so much. Yeah, this is my first time talking, where I do watch these, so I feel like familiar with all of you, but I'm the first time being on screen, so.
You did great, Katie.
Thank you.
All right, well, any more questions for Katie? All right, well, thank you very much. And now, let's see, any additional agenda items, changes we need to address? All right. Then did we have any public comment that came in online?
We did not.
Okay. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July 20. And we don't have an executive session today, so unless there is anything else for the good of the order, I believe we can adjourn.
Good of the order, September 16th is the third Thursday in September.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
All right, well, I'll see you all on the 16th of September then. All right, excellent. Well, then with that, we are ready to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, everyone. Bye. See y'all later. Bye-bye.
Mary?
Yes.
The reason I voted for the committee was just because I haven't been on a committee lately, and I figured it was my turn, but if you really.
Well, no, no, I think that the, I think what we came up with is probably a good, I, I understand there can only be two people on a committee, and I but I just wanted, I just wanted everybody to know I'm willing to serve on it, and I don't know if it's up to law.